Next in our family honor roll.
My generation.
Mr. Behrens?
Here.
And Mr. Christensen?
Present.
Mr. Ferrer?
Yeah.
Mr. Gombo?
Lordy.
Louner?
Present.
Mr. Noonan?
Here.
Mr. Popa?
Here.
Mr. Robbins?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Walter?
Here.
We have a call.
All right. Any public comment? Somebody out there? Any agenda additions or deletions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, in case we have to add our meeting schedule, I thought, could we just quickly ask Mr. Robbins if that first, first Wednesday of the month will work for our, for you, for the parks to meet? First Wednesday? Okay. I would make a motion, we approve the agenda then as.
Oh, hang on, John.
Oh, gotcha.
Should we discuss that latest email you put out with respect to grants?
Oh, that, uh.
Discuss it at least.
Okay. Where do you want to put it?
Put it, uh, right after approval of the minutes.
Okay.
Or after approval of financials, I'm sorry. Or just put three Bs.
Yeah, I literally just got that today.
I haven't seen it yet, so this will be interesting.
Now can we have a motion?
I would move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we've got an agenda. Moving on to action items. Uh, firstly, we got the Leonard County Poor Farm Barn Use Committee report. There was a document sent out to all of you, I don't know if you had a chance to read all that, but basically what, uh, what's going on is we got, started to get the ball rolling here this, earlier this fall. Don and myself and Rick met with some members of the barn committee, and as a stipulation of the contract for the lease agreement, there was supposed to be a committee forum, which was left for uses of the barn. And so we're trying to get that rolling and get that committee forum. And our thoughts coming out of that meeting were to try and form like a ten-member group with two alternates, and five appointed from this group, five appointed from their group, and one alternate from each group. Just our initial thoughts were myself as chairman, Don and Rick from the Miles Kimberly, Scott Bradley, and to ask Greg Julian, the township supervisor for Casson Township, just so he can kind of help with maybe some zoning issues if we run into that, or kind of navigating through the township level. So basically what we're asking for is your approval.
So you said five from our board and one alternate?
Correct.
Is your alternate Greg Julian? Or is Greg one of your five?
He would be one of the five.
One of five, okay, so is Casey, Don, Rick, and?
Scott Bradley.
And Scott.
And Greg.
Yes, and Greg.
And then the alternate can be anybody, and then I don't know if there's another member of this.
I would be interested in the alternate.
Okay, that'd be great. So if we could get a motion for that, then we can keep the ball rolling with the group. We're hoping, I talked to Steve Steyer last week. We've been wanting to, to meet here over the last couple of months with COVID, and some of his members are snowbirds and they're gone. We're hoping to maybe start to end up February, March-ish, and kind of get this group back together.
I'll move that we appoint, if that's the right word, Casey, Don, Rick, Scott, and Greg Julian is our five representatives for the barn use committee.
With Melinda being an alternate.
Melinda is an alternate.
Support?
How long is the appointment for?
It's a good question. We didn't talk about that.
Yeah.
Forever.
Forever.
Till the end of the lease agreement, I guess. I, we didn't, uh, we didn't discuss that, I guess.
Okay.
Oh.
Um, maybe kind of talk about that, because you should have like a sunset date.
Okay.
It's a fifty-year lease.
To, to be, uh, to be renewed.
You'll still be here, Scott, it's all right. You're willing to pay for it now.
To be renewed each, uh, year.
Year. That way if somebody goes off, you can reappoint.
Yeah, yeah.
Hold it in with the organizational meeting.
So for a one-year term through the end of this year.
Sure, that'd be great. Okay, we have a motion on that, is there any other discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is this a committee that's been approved by the county commissioners? As a standing commission, so it's just a formation and stuff, so I don't know whether we got to follow all these kind of rules and when you.
Well.
We didn't. The, the board doesn't select your subcommittee members now. And this is similar to the Miles Kimberly Park, Yulet Settlers Park, and Veronica Valley Park.
Those are, those are committees.
It says, though.
The board doesn't approve those.
The meeting of the Joint Leonard County Poor Farm Barn Use Committee has been held as specified in the lease agreement between Leonard County and the Leonard County Historic Preservation Society. So apparently, it was specified by county board in a lease agreement?
To form this committee.
The lease stipulates to form between members of the Parks Commission and.
Well, there's other people other than the park commission. I'm just wondering if we're making too big of a hoopla, I'm just having a committee without having to go through all this stuff, that's all. We didn't do these.
I mean, I don't even know, I guess I don't even, I'm not a.
But things is probably subject to the Open Meetings Act, which means you should have some sort of tracking. You've placed, you have a motion to approve these members, and then just go ahead and vote on it.
I think you would be subject to open meeting if it's part of the government.
I'm not saying you're not.
It is.
Everything is subject to the OMA.
Whatever.
I, it, it's difficult, because we're, we're trying to navigate through this, and this is kind of the initial startup process. Uh, and we, those comments were brought up at our meeting of, do we have to ask the board of commissioners? But my thought was no, because it's a, they said to form this committee, and we're not necessarily making any decisions, we're just exploring uses.
Right.
And then as the uses come up, we still have to get permission and address all that later on.
Well, the use committee is a recommending body to this board.
Right. So it, it'll all come back to here.
Yeah.
As, as part of the motion, I'd like to be, um, an adjutant alongside Melissa to fill in for this barn gathering, okay?
As alternate?
As alternate, yep.
Okay.
Do you guys turn in for Miley, Ken?
No.
See, it's not part of the government. It's just a, it's just a committee of people, and we ought to just let it go to that and keep it in form while we can. And get out of all this bureaucratic stuff.
We can touch base with Chet.
And Michelle.
And Michelle.
And we won't, we won't be.
Vote on it yet.
We won't be back here asking for anything until there's some sort of use that comes up. I mean, this, this is just kind of a.
Just a heads up. So do you want to just move it forward to February?
Sure.
Okay.
Rest of the case.
We'll just table it until, do we need a motion on that, or just?
Uh, you could ask the motion taker to withdraw.
Okay. You are. Dave, will you withdraw?
So withdrawing it is actually the proper step?
Yes, because you haven't voted.
Yes, I'll withdraw.
Okay. Great. We'll be, address it again in February. Moving on to the approval of the minutes. We got August fourth, twenty twenty-one, first. Does everybody have a chance to look at those, or any questions, concerns?
Any other questions?
I make a motion, we approve August fourth, twenty twenty-one special session.
Is there support?
I'll support that.
Steve, John? Moved by Popa, supported by Behrens. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Moving on to October twentieth, twenty twenty-one.
I move that we approve the minutes of October twentieth, twenty twenty-one, regular session.
And I second.
Moved by Popa, second by Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. Uh, now we have December ninth, twenty twenty-one.
I move, we approve the minutes of December ninth, twenty twenty-one.
And I'll second.
Moved by Popa again, second by Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for the minutes, they were real good. I read those.
Okay, moving on to the approval of the financials, we get the, we had them sent out to us. Scott, do you want to go over those, or any questions?
Um, twenty twenty-one, we ended up using ninety percent of our budget with the, uh, cleanup costs baked into all of that. So that was good. Twenty twenty-two, not much to talk about.
Point two-one percent used?
Yeah, right, so man. You know, a quarter of a percent of our budget used, so.
Are there any questions for Scott?
I got one question. Did we pay for the playground stuff? Last year?
Yes.
Okay. The prints kind of thing.
Not the installation, but the purchase of.
Right, installation's going to be something else.
And it is here, I know that's an agenda item, but it's here.
Well, I left it on there as an update.
Okay. And related to that, the installation process is going to be, how, a group of volunteers or a specific crew that is hired, that works for the company, what do, what do we?
Yes.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay. Because, you know, um.
I don't know.
What, no thoughts on it?
We should talk.
Well, it's an agenda item, we'll, we can discuss on it now.
We do have some decisions to make, yes.
Sure. Okay, and then, so are there any?
About thirteen thousand capital outlay, we've lost that totally, Scott. And then the maintenance and repairs, six hundred and some dollars, can we use some of that to, for installing?
Um, when, when, where are you at? Capital outlay, trying thirteen thousand. Where are you looking at that?
Uh, so, there's no page number here. It's the second to the last page, uh, second line from the bottom. Capital outlay, uh, just above capital outlay under five thousand. Capital outlay is fifteen thousand left over.
Did you say thirteen thousand?
I think I read that right.
Well, if there was anything left over in the last year's budget, that's.
Well, to reason I, uh, we had, um, just at our meeting, we just got finals from our, uh, from the finance department, and I think we, we were doing amendments and transfers. I think we actually went over budget by three or four thousand. But I know that she made some transfers to make sure that we, we didn't overspend our budget. She does transfers, we allow her to do that, so that we do, um, not violate any, uh, procedures for audit. But we were like a hundred and three percent by year end.
I think because of the cleanup in Miles, it was kind of goofy all year long.
Yeah.
Where, how we got the money wasn't really in our budget. So I think that.
That could, that could possibly be, yeah. So we were, actually ended up, I think, I'm just remembering, we were a hundred and three percent of budget, so I don't think we had anything left.
We shouldn't complain about any of that.
Well, this was dated the eighteenth, so.
Yeah.
Part of the budget? I agree. Hey Scott, John was just pointing out to me, and I saw this too when I was looking at it. It says current fund balance of seven million, seven fifty-nine.
We can do a lot with that.
Well, that's for my pay.
And that's, it is just, that's part of the county, right? That's not our.
Oh, that's not us.
You are part of the general fund, yes, and that's the general fund.
Got it.
I think we all ought to give each other a hand for spending just the right amount of money.
Ah, great, we did good this year.
Worked out good.
Yeah.
Nicely done.
Okay, moving on to, uh, the fiscal year twenty twenty-two advertising in the Leonard Enterprise.
I think Steve was going to follow up on that, but I wasn't sure he had a chance to.
No, we approve it.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need to approve the financials, Scott, just look at it.
Moved to approve the financials, last presented.
Scott?
Moved by Christensen, supported by Louner. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Steve?
Typically, um, year in and year out, we've been doing advertising, uh, two times a year, uh, in the enterprise. They do a, uh, insert early in the year and insert later in the year. And what happens is I'll get a frantic call from the enterprise, Laurel transfers it to me. Uh, we need to finalize this today, are you in? And, uh, technically, um, we should be talking about it as a group ahead of time. So Laurel's idea was to, why don't we, uh, just chat about this going into the year? I, over the last couple of years, we've, uh, tweaked the information, um, on this, and it appears twice. Uh, it's good exposure. We have consistently felt that this is a good thing, uh, for us to advertise our parks, and it's about the only way we do it. And we've always agreed that this is a good thing. And now we get a chance to talk about it before it happens. So, I, I don't know, I think it's pretty good. It, it gives people an awareness that we have county parks, and they're in these locations, and each little blurb, I felt, was, uh, representative, and, um, people are in the county, let's.
Well, keep in mind, this doesn't include the amount that you may or may not spend on those pamphlets. That's a different charge.
Right.
Yeah.
What, what is the cost on this, Steve?
Right here.
That's it for both of them?
That's what it was last year, it might have bumped up a little.
Six fifty and four seventy.
Okay.
The, uh, and I think we've got enough of those, um, pamphlets to last a year at least. And I don't know about the stickers.
I, I was making stickers up, so that's not a big problem.
Stickers are no problem, okay.
There are things, I would say, maybe move this to February if you can get a firm quote, because the person that could have given us a quote was out of the office because of COVID.
So I, this is a to-do for me.
Yeah, if you get a firm quote, then, then you know what you're approving. I'd hate for you to approve this, but then it's gone up.
Could we get a copy of what we put in last year? Could you send that to us, so we can review that? I remember seeing it in the, um, the first, the visitor's guide. I don't remember seeing it in the color tour magazine, but maybe we.
It's this.
Is that all, this is all?
It's this, yeah.
Oh, okay.
This exact thing appears twice.
Okay.
It was in the color, color guide as well.
I, I saw it in the visitor guide, but I didn't see the color tour magazine.
So between now and February, everybody can kind of read through that and.
Yeah.
Critique it a little bit, and I'll get a firm quote from the enterprise on, and.
Don?
I, I really think this is a wonderful idea, because I think the more we see people come to the park, and people see people coming to the park, the more they're utilized. People, the board of commissioners will realize how important the parks are, and they'll fund us more than they're doing already, so I really support this. I have a couple of suggestions. I see that some towns are noticed on the map, and I want to get, you don't want to be too busy, but I think we should mention Cedar or Maple City in narrative, so people realize where the park is, relationship to the center of this, center of the county. And, uh, the other thing I would like to see, it's too late this year unless we have stock photos or something. The, uh, these pictures for the visitor guide are excellent, but for the color tour guide, it'd be nice to have some autumn shots of these, and that would just really high-level, a little better, nuts up. But I think it's a wonderful idea, money well spent.
Any other questions or comments? This is one we can move on to February as well, because.
One comment, uh, related to the Veronica Valley. One of the requirements that the people had for the donation of the land was, uh, hunting is allowed. Should we put that in there?
For the word.
For Veronica Valley?
This little paragraph. It's in that little, uh, insert here.
We mentioned hiking and fishing, but there's no hunting mentioned, and so just a thought. Should we mention?
I would probably skip out on mentioning it, just because it's been a difficult topic, and if more advertising, it's going to mean a little more problems.
I think signage-wise, we're good, Scott, I mean.
It is, the rules, the, the family put the property in because of that, it has to be.
Yes. Scott, is it on our signs? Do you?
So signage-wise, we're good. Signage-wise, we're good.
Signage-wise, yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's a big sign right under the park that says hunting is allowed.
I, I mean, as long as it's advertised at the park, at least, I, I would negate, or, I would be against advertising it anymore.
And it is in there, green, and it's in there, B, definitely.
Yes, it is. Just by own personal thoughts.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty noticeable as you pull up.
For one, I probably have hunting too.
I didn't realize that. Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, good.
Can I see, Scott?
Any other questions?
I assume whatever this scan is on here takes you right to the next Parks and Rec webpage on the county's government website.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions, comments on that? Moving on to the grant discussion, which was just emailed today. I saw the email, but I did not get a chance to read through it.
If there's a chance that everyone wants to click on the link and review the opportunities, if someone wants to follow up on it, or work with me on it, uh, we can see, I, I think Trudy had noticed that it was including Parks and Recreation types of applicants.
Right.
So that's why she shot it out to me.
Because they were, she had.
Specifically, it talks about walking trails.
Yes.
Walking trails, dog parks.
Which would be nice, for Miles.
Is the window open at this point? When I clicked on it, it was a December window open.
And it could be the link is still for last year? I don't know. I didn't have time to look at the link, because we're coming off a board of commissioner meeting cycle right now. But, and she just sent it to me today. So I'll do a little more review if everyone wants to look at it.
What was the source of funds?
Make it state.
State grant.
Yeah.
Mishda?
The deadline was December eighth, I think she's thinking next year.
Oh.
The next time the window opens, be ready for this, I think, is kind of what I was getting once I clicked on it.
It's currently closed.
Okay.
State of Michigan.
But those aren't designated a recreation passport.
No.
No, those, they're.
No, it's a, a different funding opportunity.
Neighbor code enhancement?
John?
I didn't even click on, I'm not sure.
I asked to put it on the agenda, because I did read what you had, and it particularly mentioned pathways. I think each one of our subcommittees should really look hard at getting something in a grant application to do this. If something does go around, and let's say we apply for, I know Veronica Valley want to put some little small pathways in, Miles Kimberly want to put a couple hundred grand of pathways in. But we should apply for it, and we should each go to our subcommittees and have this on our agenda next week as to the stat for next month. Well, it isn't actually. It's one of the fifth next month, we only got like a week. So maybe the first one in March, and we have an administrative assistant that's.
Not officially, yeah.
We can then say, hey, let's apply for this grant and look into it, and let's, let's start doing something. Things, we just haven't been going after some of this stuff.
A little, maybe easier.
Playground equipment was on there. And, uh, little stuff they like to approve. Now, the playground, we purchased it, but we can also put in for a small grant to, uh, install it, which is expensive. It's going to cost more than that playground equipment. And that's just a good one, and again, our next meeting is only in fourteen days, probably, or whatever, but, let's keep it on the agenda, and we've got a secretary that follows up real close on what has to be on the agenda. I just wanted to put it on there so that, and go home and read what, what she sent out. I'm sorry, what Laurel sent out.
Any other questions on it at this point? Moving on, we'll talk about the Parks Administrative Assistant.
Now, Chet was going to come back to you this month, but it's just been kind of a crazy week. So I would ask to bump that out to February, and I'll see if maybe he can send an email to you on what he's found that you can review at the next meeting.
Okay. What is it that we're, that he's?
He was looking into funding mechanisms.
He's got a funding concern with different things he's proposing.
Yeah.
That we've been reading about in the paper.
Okay, moving on to committee reports, we're ready for the decisions. Miles Kimberly?
Uh, Miles Kimberly is having a meeting right after this meeting. We're going to make some decisions regarding a portable toilet shelter, uh, shed addition, the maintenance building, and talk about the loop trail, uh, progress. We don't have anything definite. The only thing I can report to this committee now, and, and till next month, is that the grub shack is still there. Is that right, yeah? Any follow, any follow up?
I talked to Chet, we just got a, I don't know, Casey, do you run into him, Ken?
Yeah, I can run into him whenever you want me to.
Yes, you want to do that?
Okay, I can do that, too. I just saw him at the gas station the other day, but I, I can.
There was, there was a rumor that he was going to wait till the spring to remove it.
Okay.
The ground's frozen now, and it'd be nicer if he removed it now when the ground's frozen, than when it falls in the spring.
Okay. I can, I'll run it by him.
We do not have water until that building's moved.
Oh, okay, all right. No water, period.
No.
Okay. What about electric?
Some, not for the water.
Okay, it's, it's on a temporary panel off to the side, right?
That's permanent.
Okay, all right, okay, I'll get after him. They're all, they're all, they're all just changing, but, uh, he's older than I am.
A busy boy.
Okay, moving on, is there anything else?
No.
Uh, moving on to old settlers. Playground update, playground equipment.
Yes, so Scott told me the playground came in several big boxes. One big box.
Wow.
That is amazing, because how much did it weigh?
Seventeen hundred.
So it, it is in our possession, so I'm really excited about that. We do, um, we should make a decision, um, pretty soon, and maybe we can put out some feelers. Scott and I talked informally about this. Soul and Township Park bought a couple of pieces, and, um, ended up successfully getting them, uh, built. But it, it was a real process. We had to find a builder with a, a, um, license that would be willing to, um, oversee the project. And, and it, I mean, they were using lasers and all kinds of things to make sure it was all even, how, the depth of the cement. And then the rest was all done by volunteers, they brought volunteers in, and we, we ended up with, with it being very successful, with a lot of volunteer help at the township level. I'm just not as confident we would get that at the county level. I mean, people brought tractors and ran tractors, we got the chips donated, um, that went underneath it. They got the cement and the delivery of that donated, it was really a great, a great project. Uh, the company, Laurel, if I remember right, I think the company would send a team to build it, but I believe it was eight thousand to build it, so it wasn't quite the, the cost of the, uh, piece, John, but it was a lot. So for eight thousand, they would. I guess the question would be is, do we want to put feelers out and see if there's a company locally that would be willing to come in and, and do it? Do we try to, to look for a company that would be willing to do it, but we have to find volunteer help to come in and help do it? I, I, I don't know which way. We've got a little bit of time. It'd be really nice to get it put up in the spring, in which case we should give it some thought and, and try to get it lined up sooner, better.
Just with the way that this board functions and time-wise, it'd probably be best to try and find somebody that would be willing to do it. I mean, that, trying to get all of us to organize a bunch of volunteers.
The Levalle County State Park put in some new equipment just last year. And they used a combination of, what you were saying, where they had some volunteer help, but they also had some professional help. One of us should try to contact them and see how that worked, what they did, how they did it. I'd be happy to do that if you want.
Yeah, that'd be great, or at least get us contact person. See, yeah, okay, that would be wonderful.
What are your thoughts, Scott?
We're gonna need professional help this year.
I mean, how much, are we talking site prep up or removing existing equipment and then prepping the site and build? Is that what we're talking about?
Possibly removing some equipment. We don't have a spot exactly yet for it, so.
Look at, get somebody to look at layout, where everything is gonna sit, all that. Yeah, I would definitely put out some dealer or start looking for a company or somebody that has experience. My person has to simply be a licensed contractor? Like a state licensed contractor?
We took a licensed contractor and then someone who can read directions real well. And honestly, when it boiled down to, we had a couple of nice young gentlemen show up. That one was an electrician who just happened to have a van full of tools, and, and his buddy was a farmer, and they built a whole lot of things. And, and along came their brother-in-law, or one of his brother-in-law. And the three of them are like, oh, we got this. And they just, they knew what they were doing, they had the tools, and they knocked out a couple of pieces, you know, right that night. And so we, we were really lucky that way. But, so, yeah, it, that's a real important part of it, too. You gotta, you know, be able to understand what the, all the nuts and bolts and stuff they're talking about when you're looking at the diagram and. It's certainly nothing I would have tackled on my own, I can tell you that, because it was, it looked pretty complicated. But took some tall guys, they were holding up stuff while they, you know, did it. So maybe a combination, but we will, we will see.
We, we can work on that together or.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever you want.
Because there may be organizations, too. It would be nice, like with this, if there's locals that helped with those other pieces, that would come in.
And I'm sure we can get some sort of volunteer help. It's just relying solely on volunteers is gonna be very difficult.
Yeah, because we might get, you know, maybe, maybe we could get the Glen Lake football team for an afternoon that could help and.
And I'd be glad to help, but just, I don't have any experience with what they have.
Right. Then there might be some other organizations, maybe like seats. They hire young people, we'd probably have to pay them, but maybe they can help even if it's just hauling some of the pieces over to where they need them.
One place I can consult with, too, is Glen Harbor Township, because they just redid their park not that long ago. I know Elmer's did a lot of the work, but I don't know if they did all of it or if it was just the site prep. I can talk to Deering's about getting the chips donated underneath it at the end.
Maple City got that playground from Glen Harbor.
Right.
And install it, so.
And I.
Probably ought to take it apart.
Yeah, and I know, my dad knows the gentleman, or my dad helped a little bit with some of that. And he knows who did it, and I don't know if that guy, how he knew how to do it or what. I don't know. I, I'll look into it on my end.
I'll take a look at the instructions, too. I mean, I.
I think as far as building this.
I'm only guessing, I had it, so I can't speak.
As far as building this structure itself or putting it together, I think we, few guys could figure that out. But as far as having all the posts set in the right spot and then the whole stuff.
Cemented in.
Yeah, I mean, it's gotta be right on.
Yeah.
Build the house, you can't cover it up.
That's where the lasers and the transits and all that stuff come in, so.
Built to the safety specifications required.
Right. So I'll check with my dad, and I, I don't know if there's Bob Oran or. So, or Bob Underwood, maybe, I don't know. One, some Bob guy was the one who, who put it in at, or at the Lions Club. And my dad did help with some of that, because he had to take the tractor down there to move some of it around. So I'll check with him on that, and Deering's will be down the road anyways, but.
When we did the playground equipment at Veronica Valley, we went ahead and hired the company to come and do it. And the chips, if you will, that went underneath it weren't chips. They were specifically designed for underneath playground equipment. This was kind of all in conjunction with risk management that this project was done. So I think if we're going to get chips donated, we should run it by risk management just to see what they think of that idea. It might be something that we would forego and get the real McCoy instead. I know it's pricey, but we did it for the other one. And I don't, I can't remember exactly why and where for, but that's what we did. That's what we did with that one.
Were they the rubber, rubberized?
No.
It's wood chips. It's an engineered wood chip.
They are.
Shredded more, kind of.
Yeah, they're, they're, it's a, it's a shredding process that allows them to, allows them to, it stays together. Whereas the wood chips, you know, you, the sway under the swans and around this, they disappear right away, because they just fly. So I don't, I don't know.
Well, maybe we can have a subcommittee meeting on it.
Sure.
Get that organized. Come back. Anything else on the old settlers?
Is there a date for the next meeting? She's not committed?
No.
Not yet. Nope.
We'll get it set up and.
Nicely done, Melinda. Your, your push got it done, and it was, it was very nice.
Moving on to Veronica Valley?
Well, the first thing we have, most immediate, is this request from the Todd Unlimited Chapter in Traverse City for use of the park. They're looking, they said their preference is May seventh or May fourteenth. Laurel, did you, do you have a phone number for this gentleman?
Uh, just the email contact.
I don't know if you looked at it and what Laurel sent out, but it was explained to him that we don't have a reservation system. It's first come, first served. I'm, I'd be very willing to call him.
That would be good.
You don't have a phone number at all?
No.
Okay, well, I'll email it and explain policy.
Yeah.
On those particular days. I don't see, you know, the one thing we know is, no, you can't have it the last week of June. Kids' fishing day coming up, etc. So I will get back with him. They don't need a reservation. They can plan to be there. I don't know the size of the group.
Yeah, we're not even worried, but it sounds like another fishing day.
Well. It may be, but we aren't providing fish for that day.
Right.
Which we do for the kids' fishing day. It's a much smaller scale, I have to say. Oh, yeah, no. Scott Walter just brought up a point. We don't want that confusing. Parking lot entry that we put out the RFP for. Do we just, they don't reserve a day, so we tell them first come, first served, and oh, by the way, we may be having some construction there at the same time?
Absolutely.
John, do you have an idea of, of type zip? Okay.
Yeah, I would just let them know that potentially, this is a project that's coming up. We don't have a date by any means, but potentially it could be that weekend.
I think we can work with whoever is awarded the bid to try and limit it for that, whatever date they choose.
Correct.
What's the, the terminal date on submitting bids?
For some reason, I'm thinking it's February eighth.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
Fifteen.
I can't hear it.
That could be.
For the driveway entrance at Veronica.
Oh.
Because I just talked to someone about the other bid we have out for Towers, and I know that's February first.
Are they gonna install the pavilion?
You would like that, if that would.
If they're gonna install the pavilion, I think we should reserve for them.
Anything else on the Veronica?
Well, we have our next meeting scheduled tentative, I mean, right now. The schedule is not tentative, but it's February seventh. Anticipating when I set that up that it would be prior to our next meeting.
All right.
It won't be unless we reschedule. But what we need, what I would bring back from the, our next meeting to you is some finals on the wayfinding signage. Don and John and I met with Rob Herman last week, and that process is well underway. We made, made a couple of decisions. I would anticipate that then at our February meeting, which is, what, now we said the second, we will have paper copy of the signage for us to approve. John's been in touch with Traverse Repro for costs. Plus, they're not out of line of what we've talked about before, so we're gonna be able to afford it. And it's not gonna be a giant cost though. The other thing we will be talking about next in Veronica Valley is to make a decision on, that's not the final, final, final of apartment lot design, but enough of the recommendations to this group on the design so that we know where, where within the culvert seventy-some feet.
Yeah, seventy-four feet, I think. Is that right, John?
Seventy-four feet on the culvert?
Well, I ran out of.
We're not ready to discuss it.
Well, it's just that we have to, we do have to come up with a decision about.
We gotta run that in Veronica Valley.
Absolutely, and that's all I'm saying.
So we shouldn't be.
Well, okay, all I'm trying to do is, what we have to decide is on a decision, a design to recommend here. We all, we have to get all that done before we begin any of this entrance work, because the entrance can slide right or left within the total width of what we have. So we will be discussing this at our next meeting. We may get that meeting done before the February second. As I said, I have it scheduled now for February seventh. So that would then put off any recommendation to this group until March. Now, John Koper, we don't expect, well, John and Laurel, we wouldn't expect work to begin on before March, first Wednesday of March on that.
Work won't begin until after cross laws and everything else.
So we have time. We're going to come to you next in terms of that whole parking lot entrance with our recommendations for the basic design and layout of that parking lot so we know where precisely to put this entrance, which will get started this month.
All good?
And that's really it?
All right. Any other, anything else on the Veronica Valley? Moving on to public comments. Don't see anybody out there. Any commissioner comments? None? Here, Percy, comments, nothing from me. Motion to adjourn. All of the favor? All of the opposed? We are adjourned.